So, um, welcome everyone. We were to start at seven fifteen and apologize again for the delay. Our executive session went over. But welcome to the December third meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. It's seven thirty, seven PM. If we can have a call to order and roll call please.
President Paul Schubert.
President Hulanyi.
President Gina Stanis.
President Mary McGolden.
President Paul Newbain. I want the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as a reminder, the, the school committee meetings are both televised and recorded. And we traditionally now start with an invitation to speak, so if anyone has anything they'd like to say, we'll have other opportunities throughout the meeting that we'd love to hear.
Patty Ellis, Jerusalem. On Comcast, there's no, there's no audio.
Really?
Yes, it hasn't.
Oh.
There's no audio. We worked, we were looking at the board selectmen last night, there was none together. There's no audio. My husband's trying to watch it every week. School committee, last two weeks, no audio.
Thank you for letting us know.
It used to be really, really static, like it was actually tough to watch because you'd have to turn up so high and static so high. There's no audio whatsoever for Comcast.
And there used to be antenna that were, microphone antenna, right? That were installed recently?
Yeah.
Diane has a comment.
Just, just because I have experience of this, a lot of times it's Comcast or Verizon because I've asked on news about this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've gotten the same feedback at the board of selectmen, so unfortunately sometimes it's just the cable carrier. But it's definitely something to make sure they know that.
Right.
Yes.
We, there's a, there's a point of contact there we can let them know, right?
Um.
Well, usually we would talk to Don Roy.
Yeah, they'll talk to Don and the Lord.
Alright, thanks for letting us know. Okay. Any, any other comments? Alright, so we'll start right away with the superintendent's report. The first item on the agenda is the superintendent's excellence award. The, uh, we'd like to postpone that till the end or perhaps until the next meeting, we'll see how that goes. But the next item up would be the Model UN?
Yes, so you have in your packets this time, this meeting, the Cohasset Model UN for the fourteen fifteen commitment, and Mr. Willis has come to talk about it because time is rushing by. As you can see, the date is January twenty ninth and February first, and so it is out of state trip from, is one of them from New York?
Yeah, the March one is out of state and the January one is Boston.
Yes. Right. Here. So he's come to talk to you about it and answer any questions, it will require a vote.
Um, well, we, we have two conferences scheduled for a Model UN this year. Being generously funded by the CDF as a program this, this year. We dropped it last year because it was unfunded for three years prior. We did, uh, we've done Harvard every year. And then two years ago, we did Harvard and New York, and this year we have the, the membership to do both again. We have twenty-one and a potential up to twenty-four students who will go to, who'd go to Boston for the Harvard conference, which is held in Heinzmann Central Center and in the Copley. And then they stay in the hotels, all contained within that complex. And it's run by Harvard, actually two former Harvard, two former Cohasset students. Carly Hagerty's abroad this year, but she actually helps work on the Harvard conference and helps to organize it. And Tim Kevin, I went last year, he, he works on the Model UN conference too. So, and they're both students who have traveled Lewis in the past on this conference. And then the New York conference is the National High School. I mean, it's run by NHS MUN, which is the National High School of Model UN. It's in New York in March, from March fourth to seventh, it's a Wednesday to Saturday. So for the Harvard conference, students would miss Thursday last period and Friday only. We'd be, we'd be leaving at Thursday afternoon, we'd be returning Sunday afternoon. For the New York conference, and we're not total, quite sure on membership. We had forty kids sign up and show their interest, and so I registered for that many just in case. And then I had a meeting today and we're gonna know exactly how many kids we have on Monday, but I think that one's gonna be much smaller, probably closer to fifteen to twenty. And that would be a Wednesday to Saturday conference in New York. And they get a chance to do the conference, to do the, do the simulations and actually get to go see the UNs as well. Myself and my co-adviser is Mr. LaBisi, he is at the golf team banquet tonight, but he would, he will be, he's running it along with me this year. He will be traveling to both conferences as well.
So you're expecting, excuse me, how many for the Harvard one, do you need some?
We have twenty-one definite and we have three spots open in case people want to join late.
Do you anticipate that there could be more for the New York trip also? You said fifteen to twenty.
That's my guess. I mean, I, I have spots for thirty-seven and basically today I got them all together because they all were very, very energetic and signed up. But then I've only, I, many of them have not come through and I had to give them a deadline because I have to get hotel reservations. So, so I gave them the deadline of Monday and I said, I'm gonna make the call. We have two delegations. I have one of twelve, one of twenty-two, and then some individual ones. So I can play with that and I can give some back to the conference to let schools off the waitlist. So we have those reservations, so everybody who wants to go will be able to. The question is how many of them are gonna commit by Monday? And I haven't even, you know, required that they bring all the money. I just give me a parent sign form and a deposit so I know you're serious about going and we'll have those spots. My guess, I'm estimating about fifteen for New York, we'll, we'll definitely do it.
Have you had students who would like to go, but the financial situation prohibits it?
I have had no one come to me with that yet. Over, and, and over the years, I've never had anybody come. I've had a couple of parents work out with me things over time. You know, I have one student going to Harvard and mom contacted, contacted me separately and we came up with a, with an agreement that works just fine for us and works out over time. Because we, uh, we have that, we have that leeway because we pay for the hotels, we pay for the conference fees at different times, so we can do that. But I haven't had anybody come and say they were unable to, to go because of how much it cost. I have had students who have come and talked about fundraising and I, I'm all for it, but it, I, I always tell them the same thing and you can be, you know, student driven and you can tell me what you want to do and we'll organize it and do it. And they, we haven't had any students come through on that part.
Um, well, Mr. Willis is here and I'll direct this to the pause, you can direct it to him. Um, was, was there any, was a trip to, um, Washington and then I thought Mr. Willis was gonna go, but then there was a matter of would he get, not get paid by the union or get a stipend or something? Because I think that's something we could put forward, that's what's holding some of these, this trip, maybe to Washington DC or teachers getting a stipend for going to DC, that, that's what I heard.
Not sure of the history there, Robert.
I don't have the history, any past opportunities going to Washington DC.
I don't know anything about, I've never, I've never planned a Washington trip to Washington. And I have no plans to, I, I know that in the past, I think there was, I don't know, in other schools, I've heard of middle school trips to Washington DC, but I've never run one and have no plans. In this particular case, there wasn't a UN stipend, so that's why I didn't do it last year. I did it without a stipend for three, for three years and then after three, I said, I, I just can't take these long weekends away from my, my family. And then this year, see, I funded it with the hopes that if we can get it on the stipend for the next contract, it would become a funded thing. But that's all.
Well, we're really glad it's back and you're doing it. It's a terrific experience, I think, for people. And we're actually working hard with the teachers' union, even yesterday we met, and, and about stipends and it's important to be funded going forward, so hopefully that'll be the case.
Now, there's also a great number of retired diplomats in the town. I know there's two ambassadors that are retired in town. I know many others that are working in the State Department or other various US agencies. So there's a huge draw here. This is the sort of thing that I think from the point of view, the kids will have a great experience. They have an opportunity for a career that is remarkable.
Yeah, I'd love to have a, a few years back, our, the first year I did it, we had somebody who worked with the Polish consulate and he actually came and talked to the kids as well as my European history class member, it was great. But I haven't, but that would be, I'd love to have it.
They still live in town.
I wonder if we could, um, I think, one of them happens to be a former ambassador of Saudi Arabia who lives a few hours down from me. Maybe I could put him on the spot.
What is my direction? We'd love to have him in to talk and we think that would be great.
Wasn't helpful.
She's sending an email right now.
He's used to dealing with difficult circumstances. Okay. Great, well, thanks for, for all your work.
Well, we need to vote.
We need a vote to accept the, yeah. So we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Cohasset Model UN two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen trips. The first to Harvard and the second to New York. And I'll second it with a lot of pleasure.
I just want to comment also, thanks to the CDF for the funding of the programs.
Yes, that's kept alive.
Absolutely. And also, Dr. Lieb alluded to the fact that if there are students who do not have the funding, there are, there are organizations in town who possibly would, would help with that.
That's great to know. Who, should such a case come across my, you know, my attention, who, who do you think I would contact? Who should I go through the principals or the attendants?
Well, the Social Service League is now, not gonna be doing that because they've done it a large number of situations. But I would go to the principal's office. Because in the past, the principal had some discretionary money that, you know, I know in past, in my son and daughter's years, yeah, for situations like that. And I think that's really important that the students know that there's a way to get some help. Sometimes they're not going to come to you and say, well, I, I need help. But if they know that there's some scholarship, and using the word scholarship is really important, or a grant, or some way to do, say it like that. I just don't think educational thing should at all be, you know, a hindrance on people's ability to pay.
Sure.
And if the principal can't figure it out, then tell her to call me and I'll find people who will pay. Because I have a list and I keep going down my, I'm involved in about twenty charitable nonprofits, I'm on board of about ten. So I just keep going down my list. And the next one up will be the one I call.
It's all in favor. We lost the, the votes.
Yes. Roll call?
Uh, yes, Hulanyi.
Uh, Gina Stanis.
I, Paul Schubert.
I, Mary McGolden.
I, Paul Newbain. Thank you very much. That's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thanks.
Alright, next item on the agenda.
Yes, so enrollment and teacher projections for Osgead. We have a series of parents here, I've met some, to talk about this. And I'm not gonna be as detailed as I had hoped to tonight, but I'll continue to keep this on the agenda. We did have, May was able to come in, we had to come in, it was great. We talked about some of the issues around trying to figure out the counts of teachers we need and when can we assume those numbers and begin to finalize some of the needs for next year. And of course, we are looking at the fact that the town has not given us a final number that we have to work with yet. So we are obviously looking at and meeting with Mr. LaCount as we have with Dr. Decker, as we have with Mrs. Conley, looking at what they're asking for and putting all the numbers down on the paper. And Mr. DeGenaro is cranking out all the numbers every day as we take a look. But one of the other things I said that I would do for the committee, and I wasn't able to do it this week, and I probably won't have it done for next week because it'll be in the meeting in January, is to take a look at that ten-year projection, the way that we learned when Mr. DeGenaro and I attended that meeting. We saw what Needham did, and so I wanted you to know that I did reach out to Needham and ask.
That's still the bullet town manager.
Yes, yes, I did. And then she sent me back to the town clerk as well. So they gave me, a couple of things they gave me. They gave me a, a committee report they want me to read about future of the schools there and how they've looked at the future of the schools and making predictions, which I will do. But I downloaded it and it's about sixty pages, so I have not read it in the last twenty-four hours. But the other thing they talked about is some of the things they do in terms of these census, because I know that's been a big conversation, how is it that we can't quite get the numbers as accurate as we would like? And they talked about the fact that in the school department in Needham, they use the census data to send out notices to kindergarten families. They don't just send out everything apparently for their notices. And it says that in order to register their child, they say if a parent finds out they didn't receive the notice for registering their child, then they'll call the school department, which would be a logical thing. Following that, before they can fill out any paperwork for the school department, they send them back to the town to fill out the census. And then let them come back and fill out the enrollment papers. So I think, you know, I certainly will talk to the town about this. Some of the ideas they had of what they do and maybe, I don't know if that's something that would be appropriate for the town of Cohasset. It's not my place to say to the town side, I'll certainly speak to Christina as well, but I will suggest what we are learning from other towns in terms of trying to gain an accuracy about having a better enrollment. I also, the town clerk had forwarded some additional informations and she said that's a struggle to get all the census returns. So when we were presented that it was pretty much almost a hundred percent, the town clerk says that's not true. But she does, did say they get about eighty-five percent return. And she said they make some phone calls and they look at who registers their dogs as one of their ways to try to gain an accuracy. They said that they return, if they don't return their census, that they print out new ones and ask them to look it over and make any corrections when they show up for the dog license. That might be when you show up for a transfer station sticker or beach sticker, I know they combine still here. But, you know, there might be ways, and I'll be working with Mr. Senior on those suggestions that came to us to see if it's appropriate for the town of Cohasset. I won't make any assumptions, but to see. And then what I'll be doing is also, that will help us, if we can have more accurate kindergarten count, will certainly help to have a more accurate count going through first and second grade. That's really the opening point that we need. And then as far as what we have for numbers this year, I'll be going through the numbers like we learned at our meeting. Mr. DeGenaro and I look at the ten-year perspective to see if we can gain some accuracy based on the numbers and see if the class, such the large class that it is, if it wasn't an anomaly. And that the rest will sort of regulate. And that's what they said when we went to this meeting. They said Needham had happened, that if they have an anomaly about once every ten years, then there's a jump and then it all comes back down again. So we'll be doing all that. So we don't have a specific number, it can come tonight and say, well, we're going to have, you know, twelve teachers in first grade next year and fifteen teachers in second grade, and I know I'm exaggerating the number. But at the very least, we haven't taken anything away either. We're just trying to get a handle on what are all our options, not just for Osgead, but for Deer Hill and for the middle school and for the high school. What are all the needs generalized? And then when Mr. Senior gives us our number, we can sit down and refine what we need against what we want.
That sounds good. And one question is, I know you probably don't have access to the numbers tonight, but, and we need to look at this comprehensively across all the grades.
Right.
But in particular for first grade.
Right.
Moving into second grade. Do we, uh, do we have any numbers with us right now to know how many students there are currently in first grade and how many teachers there are in second grade and so on?
I left my sheets in the other room, one thirty-three.
It's a hundred and thirty-three in first grade.
They did something about thirty-three and there are six teachers in second grade.
And, and how many students are there currently in second grade?
Oh, thank you, I have it here. Currently a hundred and twenty-three.
Students in second grade?
Yes.
Okay.
With six teachers. With an average class items of twenty-two point five. We have one new first grader, so here I think at one thirty-four.
One thirty-four. And, uh, okay.
Two, a new first grade, because I think I just got an email that somebody's leaving. I'll take a look.
There was a new one last week who went into Mrs. Gibson's class. And I don't know.
And I'll take a look. I just got an email from somebody that somebody just withdrew today or is done on Friday.
It doesn't, I mean, it shouldn't be different.
So it's about twenty, if the six, if the hundred and thirty-four or so moved in the second grade and there were still six teachers, it would go to twenty-two?
Yeah, like twenty-two point one or two or something like that, right?
Twenty-two point two, yeah.
And what is it currently in first grade, the ratio? How many teachers are there for, for the hundred and thirty-three?
Currently, we have seventeen teachers for nineteen students a classroom.
Nineteen point seven.
Nineteen point seven, okay. Okay. So obviously, that's gotta be looked at, and I know, um, we have to do it in a larger context. And we also talked about making sure that we made a decision, in an ideal world, in, by May, right?
Yes, that's what we're trying for.
Okay. So we have a few months here to sort things out. But I'm sure people want to have some comments tonight perhaps from, from.
Oh, I'll, I'll just say, I mean, it sounds, I mean, everyone's like, oh, how lovely to have, you know, twenty kids in a class or nineteen kids in a class. And I think there's some compelling sort of just personal stories that people have from the last two years of the sort of upheaval that it's been. But I also just think, um, it's just important to remember, I, I mean, it's not just like we want small class sizes because we want small class sizes. It's just, I, I just keep going back to the, the demands on the first and second graders now, which have gone up significantly in the last, you know, every year it seems to be more and more. I'd say the last ten years, what first graders are expected to do in terms of reading. I mean, they're coming out reading in kindergarten now, twenty years ago. I put a, a MacArthur Foundation genius grant, T, who ran the University of Chicago Lab School, who said, if I tried to teach my kids to read in kindergarten, I would have been shot by my principal. And developmentally, you know, it's, there's still debate about it. But at any rate, you have kids developing at such different rates. You have kids who usually in the elementary school, and this is my perspective, it's not fact. But it does take a while to get kids on IUPs because there are developmental differences. You don't know who, who really needs to be on IUP, who's gonna catch up developmentally. So I just think it's just, in the context of the early elementary education, it's still that class size does make a huge difference. And even from hearing anecdotally from some of the first grade teachers about, about what a difference a nineteen versus a twenty-two or twenty-three kids can make in terms of what they're trying to achieve with these kids. You know, some of who still have executive functioning skills that are, you know, really make it challenging in those classrooms. So it's, it's, and I, you know, and if it's not seven teachers, maybe it's a bunch more ESPs to make a difference. You've got one ESP right now for seven kids, which in a six-hour day means they're in each classroom for about an hour. I mean, that's not a whole lot of help for the teacher, so, I, I mean, I don't think. So at any rate, and then you've had two years where a lot of kids have been, you know, disruptive by late starts in the teacher. So, I mean, I'd still argue for, you know, either having, adding a significant amount of ESPs or holding that additional teacher. But I just don't think it's like, we want small class sizes because we want small, small class sizes. I, I mean, and I hope, and I realize, I also know there's a lot of issues going on in the middle school in terms there. There's definitely a numbers bubble. We happen to have a little group down here that's got a big amount of numbers as well, just in that first grade. And I know, what is it, four, four, five and six are big, is it?
Yeah.
So I, I get it, I know their needs there, I just, I just do think that there is a need down here. And I don't know what the kindergarten's gonna be next year. I have one going into that grade. My guess is based on the economic downturn in two thousand and eight, that unlikely. I meant to look up statewide census numbers for births that year, so maybe that could be helpful. I meant to check out the, what the lottery numbers were in the recent years. Is, is that an indicator of how many kids are gonna go into the kindergarten, is that on how many kids you had register for the Osgead preschool? Is that indicative, indicative of what your class is gonna look like? And I'm just wondering, I'd love to know what all the indicators are used in addition from just what the, um, numbers are at the various preschools and census data. But at any rate, I just, I think it's a big conversation, but it's, it's, I think it's nuanced and I think there's ways to go about it. But I just feel like the kids at that grade level, what, what they're being asked to do, what their needs are. Also that, that we're an inclusive district in terms of dealing with special education kids. It, it, um, I, I, I feel like Osgead needs the staffing, so I'll stop now.
Oh, question.
Like?
Superintendent, what, what's the numbers for kindergarten from that year, this year?
The, the current class that we have here?
Yes.
Well, right now, we have a hundred and eleven.
But a hundred and eleven in all classes combined?
Half. Yep.
And that includes the half day?
Ninety-one in full day, twenty in half day.
And one of the things about the census, first off, the doggy thing, they mail it right to your house, so that wouldn't help. Um, but I believe as a.
It's part of the census that comes, comes around.
Correct, but, but people don't have to go to town hall to pick it up, they just mail it right to your house after you pay.
Right, but some people aren't paying, they might bring it to town hall to pay and they discover they haven't filled out the census here and fill it out.
Correct, correct, yeah, that often doesn't happen. What I'd like to see is some reward system for those who fill it, complete the census. But I don't know if that's legal, so, you know, that's.
I don't know, we'd have to ask Mr. Senior on that side.
Yeah, and the reward would be like, you get some trash bags to the dump, you know, I don't know.
Three free trash bags.
Some people might grab that.
No. Three free bags.
I'm high on to the.
I just wonder what they do in some towns to get such high numbers. Because some towns really do very well getting people to, you know, get their census forms in.
Well, and that's why you called Needham, because they get eighty-five percent result.
Correct, and you don't, do they tell you how they got those results?
Right, I just, what I had read is the fact that when people came to fill out, if, if, obviously if you don't get your forms for your students going into kindergarten, you're gonna start making calls.
Correct, so they did that.
And they said when parents make calls, they said, we'll give you your forms, but you gotta fill out the census form.
Because I know that they did that, was that all they did?
Uh, they said that there was a lot, anytime anybody came to make a payment, they would compare it against the database if the census hadn't been filled out. They made them fill out the census right then and there before they could have any licenses, transfer stations, things like that.
No, I think, I think that is important, I think that's all legal. So I think we need, uh, we need to get Chris to sign up for that.
So she, she did say that the most difficult thing was she, they used to send people out knocking on doors. And she said, today, everybody works, so it's fruitless to knock on doors and have empty homes.
Right.
So they have no longer doing that. She said they also send out press releases and we are trying to do, did a lot of that last year.
Right.
I was just gonna say, when I, after we met, I did Google it on a Boston dot com. They said that in Needham, they call, if you don't respond with census within ten days, they call. Then they come by your house, then they send the police.
They send the police?
I don't know how old that was.
That's what it's on a Boston dot com, that they, that that's how they handle it.
I can't imagine.
Do they search them on this?
Have them call someone's door and call.
They put it in.
It's three weeks.
Well, I, I don't, my husband always turns it around on accident, so that's how he is. But here it says that, you know, knocking on doors is proved futile, so I don't know what they're still doing. But, um, obviously you plan to send your, your student to school in the fall. You're gonna wonder why you're not getting called. The worst thing that I feel would happen is trying to get, you know, have students miss the orientation, the registration process. So that's clearly not something that I desire to have happen. So we would run it, try to put it out in the Mariner enough to, and some blackboard connects and maybe some signage. Try to figure out something that we need to do more, maybe in the public library, something. Everybody brings their children to the library. Try to do that. What I, I definitely want folks to understand is, we know in second grade, there's still babies when they're coming into second grade. We are aware of that. Amazingly, when they leave second grade, they're ready to drive cars, I think, they're so grown up and mature. But initially, we, we haven't lost the thought that they're still very young when they come through. We just, we can't today on December third say, okay, it will definitely be this number or it will definitely be that number when we haven't received anything from the town yet.
Well, we meet every month, we were just saying, actually Barbara, Diane and Chris and I. So I think it's a good thing we can talk about some best practices, because I, there are a few interfaces with government, right? And it's, and that's a good chance, I think, of doing a smart thing to pass the form across before they, you get what you want.
Yeah, I, that's the way to go.
So we'll, we'll work on that and that'll help for sure, I think. Was there another question?
Um, I have a question. Aside from gathering the census material for the population, my concern is more with timing. So let's say we have a, a pretty certain idea of what the number of students are gonna be. My understanding was last year, last summer, there were seven students, uh, sorry, seven teachers approved by this committee in, in August. But it wasn't until just before school started that that seventh teacher was hired. And unfortunately, my daughter was in that class and that teacher is still scrambling to get things together. And I just wanna figure out a way to have that process be not, not the last minute. And I, why, why was it the last minute this, this past year and how can we make sure that it doesn't hap, it doesn't happen again next year?
And we're, we're sharing your thoughts that way, and I know what I meant. We've been sitting down since September, meeting already about the numbers. I know that Sarah McSweeney brought that up as well. And we started sitting down in September as a leadership group, looking at the numbers pre-K through the high school. Overall, where the bubbles are and where the lips are. So we're, you know, some of it, we can only be so accurate, but we are certainly.
I, I didn't ask about numbers, I was asking about timing.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we are trying to do our best to secure it by May.
Yeah, I think we wanna have a commitment here to avoid exactly what you're saying.
Right.
There was a last minute scramble last year. It worked out, my, I know I've.
I, I don't think it worked out.
Well, I mean, it worked out in the sense that we have a seventh teacher. My, my son and your daughter are probably schoolmates. We, I have a first grader who's in the new Mrs. Steele's class as well, and she got brought up from kindergarten to first grade. And I, I more than, you know, as, as much as anyone on this, on this committee feel the concerns that you have, because I share them identically. And we also wanna look at this broader, it's beyond just first grade moving into second and so on. But we have to address these things quicker. We have to address them in May so people can plan, we can hire properly. It was a. It was a scramble, certainly last year, we got the teacher, maybe it wasn't a perfect scenario as we just described. But I think it's pretty obvious to me that just looking at the most, kindergarten is the least predictable, we all know that. But once they're in, it's much more predictable. But move from kindergarten to first, first to second, and so on, is more predictable. And if you just look at, without getting into too much analysis, because I know we didn't intend that for tonight, but you look at the number of kindergartners moving to first grade, it's gonna be more or less a hundred and eleven. You know, and it's similarly, first grade moving to second, it's gonna be more or less a hundred and thirty-three. We have seven teachers for a hundred and eleven, that probably doesn't make as much sense when you look at a hundred and thirty-three against six teachers in the, in the, in the second grade. So there's some reshuffling that we can do within grades, that not even take new hires. So it's a reallocation ideally, and it's a new hire as needed, whether it's E S P or teacher and so on. But that's the kind of thing that, I think your message is loud and clear and correct, that we need to do this, like we're doing now. We're gonna keep on this every, every meeting or every other meeting, until we kind of are comfortable to make a decision as a group, no later than May, so we can have enough time line. Does that make sense? Is that satisfactory answer?
It, it makes sense, but I, it also happened when my daughter was in kindergarten. And it, it seemed to happen at the last minute as well. And I, and I don't know if there's been enough light shed on, on the facts of what has happened. So my daughter's, Mrs. Steele was moved up, and then a seventh teacher was hired, who my daughter has, and she's wonderful. But she was hired less than a week before the first day of school. And I know very experienced first grade teachers need the entire summer to review the curriculum, prepare their classroom, and feel confident enough to move into, teach an entire grade, uh, group of first graders. This teacher had very little notice, just a couple days. She's brand new, no familiarity with the curriculum. She walked into her classroom, there wasn't even a rug. The projector that every other first grade classroom gets, she got two weeks ago. She did not have any supplies, and I know a lot of that is dependent on the teachers, and they build up their supplies over years from their own purses or from parent donations. But she didn't even have, there wasn't even enough time to, to help her organize those supplies. I mean, a lot of teachers will go to yard sales or whatever and, and get them. And the, the contrast between her classroom, and just the physical appearance and the way it looked, and, and you would compare it to a couple classrooms down the hall, it was heartbreaking. And my, my daughter, I mean, I, I think her teacher is great, but who can, who, how can a teacher succeed in that kind of environment? And I place the blame, not on the teacher, but on the administration for hiring her so late. And my understanding is that you, Barbara Catalda, were given the go-ahead to hire a seventh teacher, and that did not happen until right before school started. And I don't want that to happen again, and that happened in kindergarten as well, and I don't want that to happen again.
I, I don't recall, and maybe it's not super productive to talk about the circumstances that led to the mistakes in the past, but definitely agree, and we can certainly debunk on those offline if you like. But I think your point is absolutely right, that going forward, we can't make mistakes of the past. And to me, and maybe to all of us, it seems that it's about shedding light on things, understanding, keeping track of information as it comes in, and making a decision early. So I think the commitment that we're making here is if we make a decision in May, it would hopefully avoid the problems that were happening in the past. They'd have, you know, till June, July, August-ish, you know, three, four months to prepare, hopefully, a teacher for, for the right circumstances. So I think that'll, that'll hopefully solve the problems of the past, and we'll make that commitment tonight.
Well, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and can I just add something, from a psychological point of view? I am tied into a lot of school districts across the state, and I see a lot of teachers, and a couple of them been in that situation. Let me tell you, we did a lot of work in anxiety management. It's a very, very difficult position. It's very difficult for E S Ps, it's very difficult for other types of teachers, anybody who has to be able to step into a situation like that. And, you know, I've done a lot of work helping teachers to get ready. I mean, like, they come to me and they say, well, I'm starting a new job in such and such district as a first grade teacher, and I got a week to prepare, so Dr. Lee, how can you help me with anxiety about this? And I'm thinking, well, I'm a freaking school board, I'm gonna do what I can to make sure those situations don't take place, number one. And we had to work really hard in getting, doing all kinds of stuff to, to lower the, the anxiety level of, of a person like that. You know, a couple people, knowing their, their backgrounds, I told them it's not a job worth taking, not to put themselves in that position. You know, reviewing their tools and, and what they've been through in their whole life situation. I recommended a few people not to take the job, and a few of them have said, no.
All right, so Jeanne, you have a comment?
So some people shouldn't even go there, it's that stressful.
Maybe we can work with the administration, the various, particularly in the elementary schools, because it seems to be a little bit more of an issue there because of, you know, enrollment fluctuation. But perhaps the principals of those schools could put together a toolkit for new teachers to the building, and help them maybe have supplies and books.
Survival kit.
Like a survival kit, for someone who's very new to the district, that doesn't excuse what's happened. And I acknowledge what you've said, but I think that it's critical that the teachers in a classroom, particularly in the early grades, have supplies for their bulletin boards, books for their students, the rug for the floor, a projector. I, I think that there's an easy, simple solution to it that would happen.
A mentor, a mentor, obviously we have that.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't, what we do is, you know, kind of make these suggestions to the principals, and these things are good points, because you, you want...
Right, and I'm just gonna comment, because while we'll only, we will accept some responsibility, you also need to know that we check in regularly with the principal and the folks to see how our new fledglings are doing. We match them up and are very careful about the mentors we choose. The camera situation, I will be glad to talk about offline, but there hasn't been availability of a camera since the over to school. The projector, the overhead. So I certainly want the committee to know, from day one, we had a mentor set up, we had money put aside for materials, and we were very careful who we selected based on the fact that they knew about our curriculum prior to coming through the door. That was a really important thing, and then we've had regular check-ins, and Mrs. Demus has been down in the school regularly. So I do wanna not have, I don't want the committee to think that we hire somebody, we put them in a classroom, and then we walk away. That's not the case.
Right, okay, so obviously, sometimes things fall down, and all, management can always get better, so...
Absolutely, don't disagree.
And Paul, it's, Superintendent said something very important. You also vet the situation to make sure the person who is hired under these incredibly stressful situation has the right type of skill set and personality type to kind of be a firefighter in that situation. Walk in, you know, in a very challenging situation, because that's not made for everybody.
And I'm sorry, can everyone who's made a comment so far, I've forgotten, we need to announce the name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, Megan Tuss, Truusland Road, and Barbara Stephan, Tru, two sixty Truusland Road.
Okay.
I was just gonna add one, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Carry you, one thirty, let's enjoy.
May, Project Ten Hill Street. I just wanna say for the record that Lindsay from Cannon is fantastic, and having conversations with her recently, she has felt very supported by the other teachers and her mentor. And I think it is strictly been a matter of timing, that she just hasn't had the time, so the classroom and the teachers have. I have a question about the timing. You've said that you're hoping to have a decision made in May, so that decision, I assume being if you'll retain a teacher, a seventh teacher for the second grade or higher, a teacher. At what point do you think that that might be put in place? So if a decision is made in May, would we expect that everything would be settled by June or July? So that we can say, hey, this hasn't happened yet, what's going on with this? Because I don't wanna be badgering you at that point, I would, you know...
Don't make me badger.
Careful English for you. But, you know, I wanna make sure it's not really, so that it doesn't slide, because there was a miscommunication or whatever.
So there's a sort of a decision that's gonna be made, and then when is it implemented?
So if, just to give a, a framework, if, say, we, we, as a, the committee approves, if we say we wanna have a seventh teacher in second grade, the committee approves this, and we decide we don't need the seventh teacher in the first grade, it would just be a matter of pushing somebody up, it wouldn't require... If nobody is leaving and everybody's performing in a way that we feel is, is positive for the students, then it's just a matter of moving somebody up a grade, it wouldn't be posting to hire anybody. It would just keep the same number of teachers that are in the school, you're just changing the structure of the number in the grades.
Right, but I would imagine there'd be some point in time when that's communicated and everyone has an understanding that that's...
Yes, that would happen in June. If we're not needing to hire, it's a lot easier to shift internally, because nobody's going away, so they'll know before they go home.
Okay, so I think it's important that we get on the record for this. So, so we have a sort of a May decision point, and if it's a reallocation, it's announced in June. Of course, if it's a hi, if it's a new hire, it's more complicated.
Posting and finding.
So that process could take, obviously...
That understands, like, is that something that I would check in with Bob Account about, or check in with you, or if, if...
Either one, either one.
Hi, Eleanor, Full Pastor Ron. I just have a question. Isn't it part of the budget planning process, which I believe is gonna begin soon for the following year, wherein the actual budget document, there are forecasts by grade? So that you can see, you can see it move from a hundred and thirty K to a hundred and thirty first? And that, so that process is beginning soon, why would we wait till May? Because you have to put in a head count to get to the budget, right?
All right, I think the idea is you take your best guess during the budget, but you don't maybe make your final decision until as far out as you can. But you're right, as part of the budget process, we're looking at the numbers, we're gonna be trying to make those best guess decisions. So you sort of have a pretty high visibility by what, when's the budget process over, March?
Town meeting.
March. Town meeting is, is the government...
Right, and, and whether it's a hundred and thirty, or a hundred and thirty-five, or a hundred and twenty-five, you're still gonna need the same amount of teachers for that spread of children.
That's right.
So, I don't, you know, if you, you, I can understand why kindergarten is a surprise. But I don't understand why first grade would be a surprise, or second grade, or any other grade, and you would've sat in this room and talked about the bubbles going into the middle school, and how they're gonna be accommodated during the budget process. And it just seems like this just didn't happen within the budget process, because you knew the nu, we knew the number from K to one. We knew, we knew it was gonna be.
Right, no, that, that's, I think that's right. I mean, and maybe, you know, maybe we should talk about May versus earlier?
We can, but the, the truth is, until you vote on your budget, there's always movement happening, unfortunately, it's fluid. So I would never make an absolute final commitment until you're ready to vote. I just, I, I don't, it's different with...
When's town meeting this year?
May.
May second, okay.
Weekend, first Saturday, that's all I remember.
That's interesting. So it's not a question of, it's more a question of the budget, the money, that type of thing. Because in the worst case scenario, you know, the town could say, you're getting this, this much money, and you have to scramble and figure out what you're gonna do. Or the best case scenario, where you get more, because...
Perfect scenario.
So it, it, it seems to be based on not being able to confirm because the budget.
Has to be...
I mean, however, I do agree with what was just said, we can have a plan.
That's right, and we do.
Okay, we don't have to wait to May to have a plan. You could go look at the statistics and get a sense of how many kids we lose from kindergarten to first grade, and from first grade to second, for the last decade, and get a really good idea of what our numbers are gonna be for kindergarten first and second. Versus, you know, that number's not gonna just be people losing, but how many people come into the, the school district. So it's both, and, you know, that type of thing.
Right, that's what Mr. DeGeneres and I went to that program and saw them do.
Correct, and we can do that, but we can, we don't have to wait to May to do that.
No, we don't, no, we don't plan to, but if you vote your, if you make a commitment, and you haven't voted your number, and your number doesn't happen, then you have to figure out where you're going to have your number.
Correct, but that's understandable.
So why don't we just sort of say that obviously during this, this sort of process, you're, we're, we're looking at it, you get closer and closer, and you, maybe you have ninety percent probability in March, ninety-five in April, a hundred percent in May. You know, just kind of narrows down as you move on the time, on the timeframe.
Yep. Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, the numbers, I think they've been pretty predictable year to year. You've had a couple of blips, like the current grade three added twenty kids from K to one, which really screwed things up, which if that happened to this class. If you added ten kids, then you're at twenty-four, which is what that third grade had in the first grade, and it was not a good year.
Which is a blip, pretty.
Yeah, and that was, that was definitely unusual. I mean, I was looking at the, what has been added between K and three. I think most of, almost all the classes have added fifteen from between K and three, and it's been this pretty consistent addition.
And excuse me, there was a kind of reason for some of those blips, speaking of Avalon and a few other things, where we're partially responsible for, not completely, but partial. Some of them.
Yeah, so anyway, I mean, you get the occasional weird stuff happening over the summer, but it's not usually too typical. But I'm just, again, thinking with this grade one, if they happen to add ten kids this year, and we cut, and there wasn't a teacher, like, that would just be a bad scenario. But anyway, that's all through, through right now.
Oh, and we appreciate all of your help too, because anyone that has information that can be helpful to make a good decision. And there are a lot of good statisticians that are in the community and things, so anything we can get your help on would be much appreciated.
So is the budget something that Rhoad and I had town meeting, like, can we, I'll show up at town meetings, like...
Yeah, we'll, we'll always.
We have sessions here first, which you could, we'd love to have you here, and we talk, we go line by line for many hours at a time. And, and, and we basically go through everything.
The budget process here for the school is very interesting, it's on a big calendar. It's all posted. It's all posted, but when you sit here and go through the budget that they hand out, it's actually very interesting to see going to middle and senior. It's like running a mini corporation.
I, I will just say that the, the importance, right, well, the importance of, of parents, particularly because we do consume so much of the town budget. We are sixty percent of your tax pay in dollars that come onto our schools. So really, by showing up at town meeting, you're voting yes or no for the money that you are giving to the town in the form of your tax base. And it's really important as parents to come and support what you think is necessary for the school budget. So when you say, you know, is it really important? Absolutely, the more parents that come in here, and, you know, there are obviously things that are said that are justifiable for all kinds of directions, but we think as many residents who can come should, it's in your best interest.
Can I just say something about the town's town meeting? Yeah, I reiterate that, because if you went to any of the town meeting, it's not representative, it doesn't go sixty, forty in terms of the age of people there, and it's just the opposite. So, you know, it's a very interesting structure, and some towns have changed that structure, but, you know, it's, it can work. It's just we really need that sixty percent that we're working on in here to show up, because the forty percent shows up. And, you know, we should have everybody show up. Their needs are important, I'm on the Board of Elder Affairs as a liaison to the school committee, and we help them, and they've been, you know, helpful to us, we all try to work together. But we, we wouldn't want to have, let's say, five percent of the people at town meeting be people of young children. That, that would be a shame. There should never be five percent of any population, you know.
Selecting guesstube?
Yeah, I'll be guesstued, thanks for going. The school budget, within the budget, is one item, one figure. The school budget, the school has lied out in autonomy. We vote for one item, and school can change all around. And, and it's very good, because this whole discussion on how many children and so forth. You're not cast in stone, anything you can do. So I urge you all to come. We, we, the way we usually vote of the whole budget is one figure, but we can have discussion, we can add amendments, we can change them. But because of the state, by state statute, one vote, one figure.
Right.
Um, so when the, uh, school, when the budget is decided upon, so we're, so they're given, like, the school's given a purse of money, then how, what are the priorities in spending that purse and, and how do we know what those priorities are and so?
So the process works almost in reverse? We start with a ground, and Dave, if you can speak to this.
Well, we have a, you know, we have a schedule that with the school committee votes on in September that runs you right through the budget process. So the beginning of January, our plan is to present an overview of the budget of, you know, if we get our number in time from the, from the town side. And then from there, we, we start digging into the, more of the details. And we have the principals, all the administrators involved in the whole budget process. So they really tell us what their priorities are. We work together on all the priorities. So as a team, we come together and discuss what our needs are, and then we decide what, what the priorities are from there.
And some of those needs are informed by the, the parents, you know, who are talking to the teachers and the principals and us, so it's.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and the school councils, okay? The school councils are really important. When I've been chair of this body, of the school board, I would say, uh, well, what did the school council say over there? So I think that that's the, every school has a school council and every school council has parent reps. And that's really important to, to, you know, give your opinions to your school council. Those are open meetings. You don't have to be the rep to, the, the parent rep to go to those meetings. And they discuss, like David, you know, was saying, Mr. DiGenero saying, you know, the, the, uh, goals and the school improvement plans, all that feeds into the budget. First you get goals and you get objectives and then you find a way to pay for all those things.
I'll just throw on, um, someone, the Osgood School Council. That was the discussion last meeting was about the priorities and did we have any comments about what Bob thought his priorities were for Osgood? Um, the other thing is that the next Osgood council meeting is tomorrow at three forty-five.
And that's open to anybody? Yes, I, I, this is stuff that's on the council, I know Jeanne opened.
And that helps us, that helps us put all that information together and prioritize. And then we also, we, you know, we rely on the committee to help us too, because if we come in with a budget that is too high, that the town cannot afford, they help us decide, um, what's priority, what may have to go and, you know, where we need to put the money and so forth. You know, sometimes we meet as a subject, sub-budget committee, the two paws are probably not, and that, that helps us to bring it together.
I, I'm just curious if as a district, do you have any guideline for how many kids we would put in an elementary class?
To two.
I mean, I know Barbara, you're comfortable with twenty-two. I've heard other schools, like it's Green Tree or Wayman, they don't go above nineteen in a class. What is our?
Yeah, a published comfort level.
It is a published comfort level, it's around twenty, twenty-three, I think is the number.
It's actually, we talked about that.
Well, there's a contractual one, there's a comfort, there's one different.
Yeah, right.
And the, at the Osgood School, the accreditation process, the, the group that came through and did the, um, audit, I think the max number is twenty-four.
So there's two different things. There's a contractual requirement that are in our arrangement with the teachers' union
Right.
that we can't have more than X number of students in a classroom.
Right.
But that's a number that we, you really don't wanna bump up to. Right, so, and then there's, and then there's sort of a comfort level where the superintendent and the judgment of her, the staff decides where that, those numbers are. And we've discussed those before. I just can't remember that exact number off the top of my head.
Well, it, excuse me, it varies by school and then within that school by grade.
Yes. Right.
We could look through the minutes. They, the, the principals all came to us in, I wanna say June.
Yep.
Last year, and each spoke about, um, their comfort levels, number of teachers as opposed to ESPs in the classroom um, for different grade levels.
Right.
And I don't remember those numbers off the top of my head, but we could find the minutes.
Yeah, and the teachers are, I mean, the principals are all part of that process too.
Right.
How many teachers per grade level in, in ESPs and so forth.
Yes. And just historically speaking, because I've been around about thirty-four years here, um, the kindergarten through, uh, second grade, those are the numbers we try to keep low, you know, very, as low as possible. In particular, first grade where reading is a big issue. But, you know, the Osgood numbers have always been, we tried in the system that I've been part of for all these years to keep low.
We'll bring those numbers.
And I heard that all, like, Mrs. McGoldrick spoke about with the, you know, the principals recommended, but usually in the school committees, the PSOs that I've been on, the school board, uh, every year it's, it's, you really wanna keep the kindergarten through to, and the high teens, the low ones. That's.
We'll bring those numbers back to you next week, next meeting.
Right.
Uh, or, or two meetings from now, because we only, we have a short cycle. So, uh, we meet next week and not, we normally meet every two weeks, but, okay, good. Well, thank you for all your feedback.
I mentioned just a couple of things about the, the budgetary process. Uh, you mentioned Wayman. Wayman had some problems two years ago and last year. They had to cut back in the school because of budgetary problem through the town. We're a little bit insulated from that. They got less money from the state. We're gonna get about the same. They had problems with their OPED, their liability, um, healthcare, uh, problems that were, it was a big piece of change that they had to cut out of the school, uh, district. So they did increase the size of their classes. Uh, we try to do our best not to do that. We have a fairly strict amount of monies that are expected from the town, expected from the state, and we have a pretty good guideline of what's expected. But one thing which I, I urge you to do, you know, special town meeting, you had about a hundred fifty people there. There's about five thousand registered voters in the town. So you have to show up at town meeting, you have to vote, you have to call Garrett Bradley, you have to call Senator Hedlund, who are responsible for getting money from the state. That's our one big option of increased monies that we can get. If we have enough money, we can get plenty of teachers, uh, plenty of staff, plenty of ESPs. If we don't have money, it's not a deal.
Right.
So can I ask one last question? In terms of percentage, in terms of what we get from the town for the school budget, are we pretty in line with, um, other towns in terms of like the breakdown?
The chapter seventy monies are done according to what the, um, the foundation is, which is what the total value of, of the, uh, real estate in the town, total value of the income of the town, and it's a percentage, it's something point three of the value and it's point six percent of the income. So, you know, you're guaranteed the town has to put that money out. Most towns are roughly in where we are. They get someone from the state. The state does not necessarily have to give us any because they're in that above the level of the foundation. So if there were casualties in the state, we could not necessarily get it.
But then it's discretionary if the town wants to give to the schools out of this.
What's that?
Then it's discretionary to a town, like, do we wanna give forty-eight percent? Do we wanna give forty-nine percent?
Well, they, they have to give a, they have to give a certain amount.
Right, and I know that.
It's a minimum, yeah.
And then above and beyond that, yes.
Right. So I'm talking above and beyond the minimum. Who deserves that?
She's wondering about the sixty-one, thirty-nine.
That's the voters. That's, that's the voters. So it's the people on the advisory, it's people on the school committees, people on the board selection.
So that's an issue that. Right. Correct. So that's where advisory school.
It's the cabinet and the voters, I mean, when they vote the final budget.
Yeah.
When you go to vote at town meeting.
That split was agreed upon.
Right. We have a lot of statistics too that we did from, actually from last time around.
Right.
Maybe it's good to dust those off and bring them up, because we can show you where we are relative to other districts uh, in terms of our spending and our size and so on. So we'll bring those at the next meeting.
Yes. Well, well, as, uh, Dr. Schubert said, we're pretty much in the middle. There are some that I would love to be, you know, within eighty, twenty, but that's real far and few between. But we're, uh, I remember doing some research one night when I couldn't go to sleep, and I went on and found all the towns throughout Massachusetts. And, uh, as I recall, we were kind of in the middle, we're in the median, you know. Not the arithmetic mean, but the mean.
Gotcha.
Great, thank you, very much.
There's some outliers.
All right, so Sean, who's in the next topic?
We will. I just, I'm sorry to be, I just want to let everybody know tomorrow night they're doing a fiscal forecast here and Eric Bradley is coming. So if you want an opportunity to have an introduction with him, it's a much smaller crowd, a much more intimate audience. Tomorrow night would be a great time to come.
Right. Right.
Where and when is that?
I think it's here tomorrow night at seven. Seven? I'm trying to look it up. It is at seven. It's seven. I just know it's here.
He's doing an opening.
Yeah, he's gonna do the opening. So if you wanted to meet him, great time, because this is not a huge audience, because these have been attended by thirty people. That's not often. So, um, anyways. All right, next thing on the agenda is an update on Lobby Guard, just to talk a little bit about where we are. And, uh, knowing that we've talked with Mr. Brunel, we know that the Lobby Guard is up and running here in the high school. And just so for the public consumption to know that, you know, we've had some parents ask, do I always have to sign in to bring a lunch? Because there's a time consumption on that. And so I have gone to the facilities manager, Mr. Kelly, and asked if he can look into a banker's drawer. So if it's something small, like a lunch bag or a small hot meal, we see, we have a lot of small hot meals still coming in, pull out the drawer, drop it in, close, make sure the student's name is on it, but, you know, push the drawer in. And then, uh, whoever's in the office can then grab it. That will take away the signing in, dropping it, exiting. And hopefully that will help folks, even in the morning when people are dropping. If it's a larger item, that drawer won't hold a hockey bag. So we'll have to assume those folks will sign in and do that. So I want you to be aware that that is in the process of being checked on. Uh, at Deer Hill, we know that Mr. Brunel's connected machine, but we also know that the doors need to be reconfigured. And Mr. Kelly is talking with Mr. Joyce about that, about a timeline and a cost. Uh, I don't have any information back yet on that. And as we know, the expectation is that the Lobby Guard at Osgood will be hooked up by December the twelfth. And at the same time, the one there is a donated system. They came from the Wally Computer folks. And so I have a letter for you to accept tonight in the value of five thousand dollars. It does require a vote and it came late today, which is why it's not on your agenda right now. But we'd like to make sure if it's voted on before it goes in, we'd be a lot happier than if we waited until afterward. So that will be going up and then following that, making sure that parents all receive through a Blackboard connect message the process that we'll be using for the Lobby Guards.
Great, well, thank you. And so we need a motion to, um, accept this generous gift from WCA, Adam Skolnick, Milford, Massachusetts, uh, who has donated one, uh, demonstration Lobby Guard security system to the Cohasset Public Schools. Roll call vote, motion.
And it's an approximate five thousand.
An approximate value of five thousand dollars.
Yes, we just have to say it. I make the motion to what you just said.
Do we have a second? Paul Schubert has it. Sign it. Roll call vote, please.
I, Jeanine Stino.
I, Paul Schubert.
I, Mary McGoldren.
I, Paul Yubany. So with the acceptance of this, we can now install the Osgood Lobby Guard. And as Superintendent Catala has said, we will, we have that in by the end of next week, which is December twelve.
I haven't seen snow in the weather, so we should just say.
And again, Osgood, just like Deer Hill, in a suboptimal location, but the best we have, given the physical conditions. And there'll be a communication that will go out shortly, um, after the install to both Deer Hill and Osgood, letting parents know that, we know it's not the perfect location, but, uh, it's, it's better than nothing. And, and there'll be a policy, um, procedure around using the Lobby Guard and that'll all be hopefully communicated clearly.
Procedure.
Procedure, thanks.
Is there a reason you wouldn't send that information out to parents before it's put in?
Uh, the only reason is we were just waiting till it was installed, so it would probably go out next Friday with the installation. We're not sending out two weeks after.
Maybe the day before the install?
We could send it out the day before. We just thought it would be easier because it wouldn't really be in use until the following week. And a lot of times people lose those kinds of things. I mean, there'll be a set of instructions there, but we want everybody to be on the same page. So, fair enough.
Excellent.
Seems like walking in and saying anything would be.
Hi, um.
Yeah.
So why will the Lobby Guard at the high school be working at its full potential?
So we, um, we actually just met about that and, and, and we basically, um, have an expansion plan. As we, as we sort of talked about, there's this sort of phase one rollout where Lobby Guard is being, uh, implemented, maybe not in the best or the perfect location, maybe not to its full potential. That's phase one. Phase two then is to expand the usage and other aspects of secure, other security features. So that takes some more planning and, um, budgeting for capital. So we don't have a firm timeline yet, but it's on our radar and we had a discussion even today to establish exactly what we want in terms of a phase two and a timeline and a cost associated with it. So, um, I can't say for sure right now, uh, but we're working on it and we should be able to give that information soon.
Now, what cost would be associated to this? Because this would be wide.
Well, I meant with the whole phase two, uh, which could include more cameras, more door, door access control. In terms of Lobby Guard, the capabilities are there already. It's probably not as much about cost as it is about training and hookups. There might be some cost to access certain databases, uh, but it's marginal cost.
I, I'm just saying like this rollout that she's been sitting there for. Well, it's gonna be coming up on over a year and half almost, two, three years.
Yeah, well, as you know, we've sort of moved the mountain, uh, and it, when, we just got it installed within the last, I think, three weeks or six weeks or something. So, um, it's, it's moving. It's not, nothing moves. I think we've all learned in municipal life as quickly as you'd like, but it's, it's moving now. And we are hoping to sort of explain at future meetings what our phase two expansion strategy is and how we'll use Lobby Guard more robustly and so on. But it is a little bit of a baby step environment, no doubt.
I just, I just think that we take a lot of baby steps. This thing's been saying about Lobby for over a year.
You're right. I wish things moved quicker too.
And but we knew, and Mr. Brunel knew when it was purchased, that he had to reconfigure the doors. So we should have been at town meeting last year again, probably not this spring getting it. We knew that it had all these capabilities. We should have contacted Cohasset Police a year ago. I mean, we're like a year behind.
No, you're right, and we know that. We've had a bunch of meetings where we've discussed that and agreed.
But I just talked to them, it doesn't.
But I think tonight is about moving forward, not about looking back.
No, I get that, but I mean, this is, like, this could be done, like, you know, some of this stuff, like, we could hook into a Cohasset police station in a matter of thirty minutes.
Yeah, it's not quite as simple as that because there's training involved, there's database access, there's privacy policy issues. But we're looking at all of them and it's definitely on the radar to make sure it gets implemented because we're not gonna stop with a machine that's in the wrong location not using to its potential.
No, I, I can get all that. It's just, it's frustrating that it's, it's now that it's been out, now we got it out of the closet, out of the box in a closet. You know, that was, you know, it just, things could roll a little.
I hear you. Okay, so let's move on, if we may, uh, to the next section.
Yes. So the next two items are policies that were read at last week's meeting. So those were the first reads. And now they're back for your secondary. So you have your K one visitor policy and your ECA security camera system policy. Which should be right in your package.
So I guess we, I think we had Mary and Jean read one each.
Yep.
Shall we do that again?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Okay.
Can I do this one?
Maybe by way of introduction to, just so everyone knows, again, we had, we sort of had a security, um, assessment that we've been going through as a team here, uh, to, uh, kind of understand baseline, what features do we have? Like, we were talking about Lobby Guard and, uh, cameras in the schools and door access control systems, trying to get our arms around that. And we realized that, uh, partly, uh, we need some policies and procedures to go hand in hand with those. So it's sort of clear how we're using things and why. We had agreed to a goal of having this assessment done and the policies implemented by the year end. And, you know, maybe a little faster than, than planned. We're gonna hopefully finalize tonight a few of those policies and check these things off and, um, and achieve what we set out to. So the first is a visitor's policy, which will be read now.
Do you want me to read it, Mary?
You go for the first one.
Okay.
Visitors to the schools. The purpose of the Cohasset Public Schools' visitation policy is to ensure a safe and secure environment in which learning and personal growth can flourish. While we encourage families and community members to be an active part of our educational system, we ask for your cooperation with the following guidelines. Visitors slash observers must: Check in at the office greeter desk and state the purpose for the visit. Provide identification. Sign in with the applicable visitor identification system, e.g. Lobby Guard system, and wear a visitor pass. Wait for the office clerk slash greeter to contact the appropriate office slash classroom to verify visit and sign out using the appropriate visitor identification system, e.g. Lobby Guard system upon departure. Many people probably don't realize that when you sign in with the Lobby Guard, you're supposed to sign out also, okay? Should an individual have difficulty providing identification or if there are any concerns regarding the individual's entry into the school building, the superintendent, building principal, or designee shall permit or deny entry into the school building in, at, it should be at their discretion. The superintendent, building principal, or designee also shall have discretion to place reasonable conditions on an individual's entry into the building, such as permitting access to only certain areas of the building or requir- such as permitting access to only certain areas of the building or requiring the visitor to be escorted by a staff member. In addition, we ask that visitors slash observers ensure that observations have been scheduled for a mutually convenient time with a clear beginning and ending. Establish in advance of the scheduled visit slash observation the purpose of the visit slash observation. Observe all applicable laws and policies, including those concerning safety and student confidentiality, and obey directions from the superintendent, principal, and their designee. Understand that the school administration reserves the right to terminate a visit slash observation in the event of a disruption in the educational process. Should a student wish to have a guest in school, they must receive permission of one of the administrative staff 24 hours in advance of the proposed visit. All students' guests are expected to follow the standards of behavior of the Cohasset Public School District. Nothing herein shall be used to place unreasonable conditions or restrictions on observations of programs pursuant to, and then we quote, "the general law" and other applicable law or regulation, and then there are some legal references also.
Thank you. So I think we need a motion to accept the policy.
Will we accept the motion?
With the small edit for the title.
Right.
Will we accept the visitor to the schools, Cohasset Public School policies?
Yep, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. So we have a visitor's policy. Very exciting call. The security camera policy.
Okay. The Cohasset School Committee supports the use of video cameras throughout the Cohasset Public School District for the purpose of enhancing school safety and security. Our goals are to promote and foster a safe and secure teaching and learning environment for students and staff and to ensure public safety for community members who visit or use school property. Security camera recordings will be viewable in each building by authorized designees only. General statement, signage and notification. Appropriate signage will be posted at public entrances to school buildings, on school buses, and in other conspicuous locations notifying students, staff, and the general public of the district's use of security cameras. Students and staff will receive additional notification at the beginning of each school year regarding the use of security cameras in the schools, on school buses, and on school grounds. Such notification will include, but not be limited to, employee handbooks and student handbooks. Camera placement. The security camera system is installed in public areas only. These areas include, but are not limited to, school buses, grounds, athletic areas, exterior exits or entrances to school buildings, and large gathering spaces such as classroom corridors, cafeteria, lobby, and main entries. Security cameras will not be utilized in any space where there is a reasonable expectation of privacy. Use of video recordings. The superintendent or his/her expressly authorized designee shall oversee video surveillance. The Cohasset Public School security camera system will be in operation and may be monitored by school personnel throughout the year. Recorded information will be used only by school officials and/or law enforcement personnel and may be used only as appropriate and permissible by law. No sound will be monitored or recorded in connection with a video surveillance system. Data storage. All video recordings are stored in a secure place to avoid tampering and ensure confidentiality in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. Recordings will be slain for, will be saved for no less than 14 days and appropriately destroyed or deleted. Any video recordings used for security purposes on school buses, in school buildings, or on grounds are the sole property of the Cohasset Public Schools. Released for such videos will be made only as permissible pursuant to the applicable law and with the permission of the superintendent or his/her designee. And then we have some legal references.
Thanks, Mary. Do we have a motion to approve the security camera system policy?
Will we approve the security camera system policy of the Cohasset Public School system? Has ready.
Second.
I'll second.
Second, Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We have a security camera system policy.
Okay, so those are both second reads, so those are now officially adopted.
And thank you both as the, the policy committee. That was a lot of hard work. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. We're still going here.
So we have two, now we have first reads for two more.
I, I have a question. When you develop those, did you get some feedback from previous policies? We looked at policies from a variety of places, including our own.
Yes.
And just kind of took the best from others changed and then ran it by...
Other schools, legal.
Yep, and then ran it by lawyers just to make sure that we were not saying it, well, it's somebody else in that office who does policies.
Yes, okay.
So we also have two other policies tonight that were all part of this, at least this next one is all part of this security baseline assessment. And we discovered that maybe communications weren't being communicated as well as we possibly could. So, for example, some, some parents expressed concern that, hey, I want to go talk to this person or that person in the school district, and they told me that I can't talk to you, or I'm, I'm not allowed to tell you this information. So we wanted to clarify that. There's certain information that is always available to parents. There's other information, specifically around security features, that due to its sort of confidential nature, we really don't disclose. For example, where exactly is the security camera? How many, how many doors do we have with access control systems? Who has access to them and when? Those things are more things that we pay a lot of attention to, but we don't disclose them publicly. Similarly, financial information. Dave, the keeper of our financials, will, will be approached by people sometimes and he can, can't talk about certain things. So we decided it might feel a little arbitrary to people unless we had a formal policy. And we're formulating a more easy to read matrix to go along with it, where certain topics of discussion addressed, kind of going across this matrix and addressed to various personnel by various constituents, whether it's parents or other elected officials or the press and so on. So we kind of wanted to be very clear about who should be communicated with, when, and what their response should be. Overall, our goal is to make it as transparent and easy to access information as possible under most circumstances. So, for example, whereas in some school districts, they might require a parent to fill out a Freedom of Information Act request for certain information. We don't want to do that here in Cohasset. If, if the information is available the hard way, let's make it available the easy way. So that's our guiding principle, and I think the policy, which is only a first read tonight, will hopefully has that spirit.
Right. So I'll do this one.
You do that one.
Okay. You're in. And this is, this is the first part of a communication policy, which will have the second leg of that fairly shortly, but probably not by next week. Okay? All right. The Cohasset Public Schools belong to and derive their strength from the people of the community. The school committee believes that for a community to be supportive of its schools, the people must be knowledgeable about the aims and efforts of the district. The school committee recognizes that citizens have a right to know what is occurring in their public school system, that school committee members and school administrators have an obligation to see that all publics are kept informed on a systematic and timely basis, and that the district will benefit from seeing that citizens get important information, both good and bad, directly from the system itself. The school committee believes such an effort should include the following objectives. One, to maintain an effective two-way communication system between the district and the various publics, which includes: A, dissemination of accurate, timely information about school policies, programs, procedures, achievement, decisions, and critical issues. B, programs and practices designed to provide an open climate which will elicit ideas, suggestions, and reactions from the community and employees alike. C, establishment and maintenance of effective working relationship with the news media. Two, to develop and maintain an organizational environment where all staff members are aware that they share the responsibility for communication of school policies, programs, and activities to parents and members of the educational and wider community. Three, to support a written plan of communication procedures at the building level, which will be available to all employees and the public upon request. Four, to provide the means for furnishing full and accurate information, both favorable and unfavorable, together with interpretation and explanation of school plans and programs to all publics. The Cohasset School Committee affirms its commitment to openness in relationships with its public and encourages citizen and staff involvement in problem solving and decision-making at as early a stage as possible. This involvement should be solicited actively and openly through a wide variety of means.
Thank you.
And then communicate, so this is for the next, this is the next piece. It's not ready for...
Right, right. And in fact, it's just a draft.
This is not part of the policy. This is really just for the process, procedure.
Right, it's, it's attached, so I was kind of surprised.
I think she didn't want it to get separated and packed, if that's all.
All right, great.
But basically what we're talking about is this matrix of, you know, the sort of inquiry from whom and regarding what issue, and then sort of response. And in some cases, you know, the response will be, you know, refer, refer the inquiry to the superintendent or to the school principal, or perhaps to the superintendent to tell the school committee, or directly to the school committee, or answer the constituent directly. So there's sort of a bunch of combinations, and it was suited for a matrix. So we'll publish that as it gets developed.
Yep. So you can separate that second page from the first page, since it's not actually part of the policy. But in the end, I know that one of the things Mr. Onuweany talked about was the fact we should have some kind of procedure or process that if somebody came into a school and wanted to know just whom should they be speaking with, we could have this document.
Right.
So that was put on the back to give the committee an idea of what we're looking at for the documentation. Not like they keep it to one page, but something that could be available for anybody.
And sort of to work both ways, to guide the staff to, who might have some information but isn't sure if they should be disclosing it or not. So this helps them make sure that communication isn't arbitrary. So if someone approaches someone, then they can say, hey, look, this is exactly what I'm supposed to do and how I'm supposed to respond. So that's come a long way.
Well, one of the things I brought up two weeks ago was Jack Canily, who we all know is capable of budgets, was told he couldn't speak to Dave DeChenere. How are, how is the school system, Dave DeChenere, the business manager, was told he couldn't speak to Jack Canily? It's a problem.
Right, so I, I don't know the circumstances around, and we don't even need to address them perhaps.
Okay, but I think there's been a misunderstanding somewhere because Mr. Canily and I had a conversation, and that was not all we agreed to either. So like, there had to be a misunderstanding somewhere. That's all I wanted.
Sounds like it. But that's exactly the genesis of this policy. Because Jack should know as an appointed official that he should be able to come and talk to, and we haven't decided yet, you know, is it talk to Dave directly, maybe? Or is it to talk to Superintendent Cataldo, who could direct him to Dave? We're working on exactly how that should all flow out, and we'll decide that as a team. And, you know, we'll read it publicly and get your feedback. So, but absolutely, no, people need access to information, and it needs to be clear of how they get it. I mean, oh, sorry, hi, Ellen.
Hi. Well, I appreciate the effort you're putting into putting in the policy. It's a sad day when we have to have a policy in a district our size, in a community our size, about how to talk to each other and how to keep everything, keep everybody informed. And in my experience in the professional world for, I don't want to say 30 years, but almost, when you start to have policies about who can say what to whom and when, it means that there are things that shouldn't be talked about. And with the exception of high-level security issues, this is a public school district. Everything should be able to be talked about. You know, whether an employee or a parent needs to be told, well, you know what, I'm not comfortable answering that question. Why don't you go ask the building principal or the superintendent or a school committee member as a course of normal conversation? I, I think that's okay to have that kind of reminder, but to have a policy and agree to say, oh, I'm not allowed to answer that. We need to speak to somebody else in this district, is sad to me. And, and I, I don't, you know, are we, are we reacting to a, a situation as opposed to looking at what caused the situation and fixing that?
Right. Well, I appreciate that. I think there might be also some misunderstanding because you're, you're, the sausage gets made publicly here, and right now we're in the sausage making, and that's not at all the attention of any of this. The genesis of this was precisely about security issues, and that needed, there was some misunderstandings where some staff people disclosed perhaps information that they shouldn't have, very innocently, perhaps.
But you didn't have a policy in place prior to this. You didn't have a policy in place.
That's exactly right.
So nothing should have happened to that small person.
That's precisely why we're doing this, because we want, let me just finish my point if you don't mind. We, we are, we are creating a policy here to address and head-on potential misunderstandings. If, and it's, for example, again, the security. If someone is asked a question about security, they should know that, you know, they shouldn't really answer that question because it says a confidential nature to it. And answering it directly could be an off-the-cuff remark that could cause a problem down the road. So that was the genesis of this. I actually think it also helps control workflow, which is a positive thing. None of this is designed to stifle communication or to make a small town bureaucratic. It's really just to help guide people so they can get answers. So if Jack Canily feels...
Well, there's no misunderstanding. Jack Canily was told.
So if, if person A feels that they've been slighted, they can understand that they weren't slighted. It was either a miscommunication or whatever. So I think it's a very sound practice, without getting bureaucratic, to have something in place in the background that says how to guide our workflow and communication. And I think we all agree on that, and that's why we're implementing it. But certainly it's not designed to be something that people hide behind or that changes the dynamic of interpersonal communication in a small town. So.
Maybe that person felt that the safety of the children of Cohasset was more important. And they said it anyhow. And this Jack Canily thing with Dave, that's not a miscommunication, okay? Now, I've been told by Barbara, by Cal, can't talk to you, Patty, by Barbara, can't talk to you, Judy Figaro, can't talk to you.
You are gonna love this policy when it's done.
You know what? You know what? Because they're afraid of the vindictive, they're all, they're all, they, they work in fear. They work in fear.
If you don't mind, we have to kind of stay on the agenda. I know your concerns. We talk about it a lot. And you're, and you're right in many ways to be concerned.
You people didn't know the first thing about security or cameras. And Barbara, you hosted, you were the keynote speaker.
We have to continue on with the meeting. I'm sorry. We, we, we're...
But you people don't know, it's like, it's like the game, it could shoot straight.
We know, we know how you feel about a lot of these things, and we are simpatico with you in many ways. So I think right now, though, we're talking about a communications policy, which we've all agreed is something that is on this side, that this is something that is positive. And I think you're gonna find that it helps you and doesn't hurt you at all. And if it does, you come to us and tell us you want the policy changed, or you, or you want it revoked. We're here to listen. But what we heard and what we addressed is a policy that I think is gonna be very helpful. So we need to probably comment on it internally here if there's any comments to that read for the first time we're hearing it.
I don't have any comments on the first read of what I read. I do have comments on this, which, which we will not discuss tonight because it's, it's not. But I, I, I will tell you, I don't agree with everything.
Yeah, neither do I.
Yeah, I, I, I have a question. He made this up.
I did. And that was meant, that is not ready for primetime. I was just throwing out. It was like a draft. I was putting AAA, BBB. Those weren't the answers to the questions.
Because if we did it...
It's a draft.
Yeah, if, if we did it like this.
No, it's not designed that way. It's not designed for that.
Yeah, because some of the concerns of what the people brought out.
Yeah, definitely.
Don't even read it. The discussion is not relevant.
It's not the communication policy.
Yeah, no, the discussion is on what I read.
Okay.
Okay? And what I read says that we value two-way communication from the community, and we want to continue that in, in the, in its most basic form. And this doesn't say that.
Correct.
But we're not going there today. That's different.
That again is a, is a template that was thrown out to help you on a Saturday afternoon.
Yeah, well, and we were there on a Saturday afternoon writing the policy.
And excuse me, can I just say one more thing? Yes, there's that financial column, there's the security column, but there's all kinds of other issues that come up.
Exactly. That's why we need to talk about it together.
Correct, yeah.
And, and sort of make it so it's a good matrix.
Right. And just talking about the history of Cohasset, oh, that's my partner, he's bringing it too.
Oh, I, I just.
Alright, she loses her right to speak.
Sorry.
So let's move on from community officials' policy, let's just kind of.
Does that have a question, does that address like, um, if a, um, um, oh god.
Is there enough for everyone?
If a parent contacts like a teacher or a principal, is there like a recommended time period for the person to get back? Does it get onto the la, that level as well, or is it more about like disclosing information as to whom you can do that for?
So the, the policy that's read was designed really just to be kind of a, almost like a concept piece.
Right.
Right, I get that.
But if that gets into the procedures, we should do that, you know, probably, we should talk about expected timelines, what's reasonable.
Just the grid.
Um, but, eh, it's not there yet, but it, but it's.
Yeah, yeah, I just was cur, cause some parents are like, oh, I emailed my teacher, it took us two weeks to get, some others are like, oh, my gets back to me in a day and, I mean, I work in a, I have to, I'm, it's recommended by the company I work for like to respond in twenty-four hours period, I don't, wouldn't expect that for a teacher, but like,
Mm-hmm. Right.
It seems like there should be kind of some expectation that's, you know, flexible, but kind of give some consistency to it.
That's good, and as we start to roll out through the procedural side of things, publicly, feedback like that will be helpful and make it part of it.
Right.
Yeah. And I, I, I get the security thing too, I have to do a security training every year when I work for one of the local colleges and it's like, it's very detailed about, you have to go through this whole online training for an hour and a half about what information you're allowed to disclose and what you can and what you can da-da-da-da, you know, so, I get that.
Makes sense. Okay.
Very, and very all possible.
Um, just so you know too, policies from the school committee are kind of overarching for the district. Some of the more procedural things should really be developed by the principals and the staff in the buildings.
Yeah. Okay.
So, well, we'll have basic guidelines, they should be handling that on their manuals.
Right.
That's good to know, cause I know each teacher has their general thing and I've never had an issue with the teacher getting back to me or anything, but.
Right, right, yeah, and that, yeah, in terms of the history of being a small town, you know, I just remember, eh, how usually things get done around here if, eh, you're a parent and something is concerning you about your kid and the teacher, especially the, the teacher, you talk to your teacher first. And if you don't, and get anywhere with that, then you usually talk to the principal of the school. And if you don't get anywhere with that, then you, you talk to, eh, the superintendent. And if you don't get anywhere with that, that's where we come in, okay? Cause we're the people that, um, hire the superintendent, evaluate the superintendent, that type of thing. And that's the kind of the pecking order of how Cohasset's been working for years. But, you know, i- it's a system where it, it starts from the ground up, you know, in terms of parents, eh, having concerns about their teacher and things like that. Teachers always seem to, eh, like, in the past thirty-four years that I've been here, that you address their, your concerns to them first, you know. I think that's how it should be and in communication policy, I hope we'll in, keep and honor the tradition of how things have been going in Cohasset and create an environment where parents feel comfortable talking to their teacher. They don't have to go to the superintendent, they don't have to come to us, they should go and talk to their teacher.
Understandably, I, I'll just let you know, Mr. Onuweany, we have a, a leadership meeting on December sixteenth, so all praise the system, it's a concern. I, I mean, it's a concern and you know what?
Should be consistent.
Things happen all the time, sometimes if somebody's email is down, maybe it got lost, sometimes it drops in a spam file and we're unaware of it, but just maybe the principals do a cursory reminder.
Thank you.
Cause what was happening, they weren't getting back to you?
I thi, I, I, I just, sometimes it can be inconsistent, I haven't heard a, yeah, massive issue, but you know, and I think even that it's nice to, as an employee,
Alright.
to have a recommended, this is what you do, even if you can't answer the question, you say, I got your email, I'll get back to you.
Got it. Right.
Something like that, it doesn't always, you know, but just, you know, definitely get back to, you know, if a parent sends you an email, get back to them within a week,
From the principal, yeah, yeah.
even if you can't answer the question right there, you know, whatever.
Were we talking about parent, principal?
Mm-hmm.
I was just asking, I was just asking you the grid about that stuff, I just.
Or parent, teacher?
Teacher.
General, general.
Okay. Right.
I'm just curious, if you're considering having anything in the policy or procedure regarding repercussions, should someone speak outside of the interest?
I don't think you can really do that in fairness.
It's a separate issue.
I think that every case, every case would be very individualized, depending on the circumstance and what the matter is. It, it wouldn't be fair to pigeonhole folks into something that we'd have to hold them accountable in situations that they don't deserve that necessarily.
But there's a generic, eh, method, right, when someone's not performing properly, that the administration can address those concerns.
Right, and their contracts take care of that too.
And, and that's a good point too.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I agree with Gina, I think it's a reasonable start to the communication policy, I'm sure there'll be addendums in addition later.
Right.
I know it well, sounds good.
You know well, you do it. Alright, great, so I guess we'll queue up a second read for the, not the next meeting, but.
Well, it could be for next week.
Could be the next week, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great, so we'll have a second read on the ten.
So we can put that on the agenda for next week? Our next school committee meeting is next week.
Well, it normally it's every, eh, first and third Wednesday, but.
Yes, you were doing it to honor me.
That's alright.
Thank you.
Great.
I'm dealing with climate change issues in Patagonia, where my son's doing research, he, he researches Antarctica. He's a graduate of the school and he got a good education at YZ Dartmouth, trying to figure out how to save our earth.
Alright.
So his mother, you gotta figure out what he's doing.
So, eh, we have now.
Why he doesn't call me enough, why I'm in Antarctica, that's why.
One last policy, unfortunately, we have the, eh, reading of the residential requirements for school membership. The, the genesis of this was, um, some, some parents had noted that, eh, that they were moving, eh, renovated their home or knew someone who was and they felt that maybe we needed some more clarity regarding, um, the availability for enrollment to the school, so we addressed this through the policy committee as well.
Um, and, and also to note, there's just one change in this policy from the existing policy that you can find online right now, but we did feel, um, when we had our meeting, it was good for some clarification, that has to do with, um, if you move out of district, but your student is a senior, they're still allowed to attend school.
Provided they were here June New Year.
Provided they were here June New Year. Thank you. That's a big one. Alright, residential requirement for school membership. Any individual residing in Cohasset and desiring to attend the Cohasset Public Schools who lives with adults other than his or her natural parents or, or legal guardians.
Yep, that's a typo.
Must comply with the following requirements prior to admissions. A legally notarized statement from the adults with whom the person is to live must be submitted to the superintendent of schools certifying they are true residents of the town of Cohasset and B, that the child resides in their home on a twenty-four hour basis. Two, students may be enrolled in the school syst, school system tuition-free on a short-term basis, ninety calendar days. This provision applies to non-residents who have either purchased property or entered into purchase and sales agreements and are waiting to pass papers or occupy their new home in Cohasset. In addition, any student who completes the eleventh grade and whose parents give up their Cohasset residency after that time will be allowed to complete his or her senior year on a non-tuition basis. Request, request for students to complete their senior year must be sent to the superintendent in writing. Three, residency. If school authorities determine that a student who is living with another family is staying overnight at the home of his or her parents or relatives outside of Cohasset during the school week, then that student must be notified that unless he or she stays at the Cohasset residence during the week, he or she will be asked to leave and immediately be transferred to the town or city where his or her legal parents or, parents or guardians reside.
Okay, I have one concern about it, cause I work with a lot of parents who are divorced, I'm concerned, and they have custody, eh, situations. I'm concerned with one B, that the child resides in their home on a twenty-four hour basis. Because you can have one parent lives in Cohasset and then the mother or father lives in Ingham and has rights to see that child, eh, you know, during the week, one night, eh, maybe, you know, one or two, I, I, I don't know about that, that could be a concern of mine.
We, we have a number of families that we're aware of that students have to be divided between homes and that we understand and, and that happens.
Correct. Okay, so that needs to be addressed, and one B in some way, cause I'm not comfortable with that, the way it is.
Let me, let me talk to legal counsel about that, if you will.
Okay. I would definitely, I would go out in front of a school with a protest sign, because that would affect so many of my clients, it's not even funny.
Right, well, the reality is if we're addressing it now, maybe the language just needs to, eh, to, eh, to change with correct.
Major's beneath the tide.
Correct.
It may have to address custodial parent.
Right.
Right, well, there's shared custody, I mean, you have shared custody, one has, um, you know, eh, the kid has to go to school somewhere. The kid's not gonna go to school halftime in Ingham, halftime in Cohasset, that's not fair.
Right.
So, um, sometimes, eh, the, it's fifty-fifty and, eh, you know, eh, especially when one parent lives so close. I think it should be, they need to have one parent in the Cohasset situation, I think that wording would help you.
Right.
One parent has to be living in Cohasset, the kid doesn't have to live with that one parent twenty-four hours a day.
Is it fifty percent or more custody, or no? What if that parent has, you know, one day a week custody?
Eh, that, that needs to be worked out with the attorney, but I just don't want anybody to be penalized if indeed, you know, they are visiting, eh, a parent. A lot of times it can be, you know, fifty-fifty, there are number situations that go that way.
Right, but can I also point out that this part B that goes with number one is under the segment that says, any individual residing Cohasset desiring to attend, eh, the Cohasset Public Schools who lives with adults other than his or her natural parents. So we're not referring to parents who might be divorced.
Right, I realize that.
So this is separate, so sometimes we have situations where a student might live with their grandparents in town here.
Correct.
It's referencing those kinds of situations where they're not with their legal custodial parent.
Correct.
But they might be living with a relative in another state, that's what that's referencing, that B.
Correct. But the way it sounds, it just like, then you don't have anyplace else that says about the custodial thing, so you don't even have to go there because you're not even going there with this policy.
Right, this doesn't deal with anybody, eh, but in questioning your, your, eh, statement about, you know, what do we do when we have children who are, have parents that live in separate towns, we understand that that happens, that the child might rest their head in one house three nights and another house four nights and then the next week it's reversed, four nights, then three nights.
Yeah.
We understand that, but this is referencing students who are not living with their own parents.
Okay.
But the whole, that means the whole policy is though, the way it's written, the whole policy is only addressing parents, eh, children who aren't with their parents.
Right.
And then we want it to be more comprehensive than that.
Well, that could be a, a, a separate situation, this is really referencing, because sometimes students will, in some towns, you're fortunate here,
Yeah, yeah.
but there are towns where students will cross state lines to come into that particular district to gain an education and so you need to have, and then they find out they're not living with anybody in town. That's not the situation in Cohasset, but that is a template that came out of MASC that is to protect the district in the event a, a student comes to live in town, somebody other than their own parents.
Yes.
So as we move to the second draft of this, it sounds like maybe we need to address a broader constituency, you know, eh, ye, yes, there's the eh, occasional situation where people are living without their natural parents and the way this is worded appears to address all those things. But then we also need those who are living with their parents, perhaps, eh, maybe custody situations as they may be, but are, eh, es, especially I think we need to address the issue of, eh, house renovations and, um, you know.
Right, that's another tricky issue, right, cause we have a number of people who are renovating their houses and have rented and hauled, eh, but they own property and that's it.
Absolutely, they can stay, absolutely.
Okay.
Eh, and the one thing to point out that in part two, I understand, so I don't think this will be ready for next week, cause you'll have to sit down and really revamp, but I was going to say also in number two, where it says, students may be enrolled in the school system tuition-free on a short-term basis, ninety calendar days. That is a full half year of school, so even though we say ninety calendar days, we might, you know, eh, we're talking three months here, calendar days, it's a long time, I mean, we're giving it, we're giving it a long time, so that, but as far as folks that we could put in a fourth paragraph dealing with house renovations and things like that, we've never prohibited families from living in another town while their houses are under renovation. That has not happened. Unless it's a very extensive, several years.
So that's confused, oh, can I say something, Paul?
Okay.
Please.
Okay, so two has to do with everybody, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And one has to do with just individuals residing, eh, eh, that's why it's confusing.
The first paragraph, yeah.
Okay, so you see where I would have gotten totally confused about that?
Right, and, and in fairness.
Cause you have this overriding paragraph.
Yes.
And that overriding paragraph just has to do with one, and then you have two, that has nothing to do with that overriding first paragraph.
Mm-hmm. Right, and, and just so you know, when you look at the second paragraph, we realize if somebody's purchased a home and something happens
So it's confusing. Right.
and the bank pushes you out five weeks and you pass your debt, we're not asking them to leave, we know they're coming.
Okay.
So you have to look at the circumstances at all times.
And maybe something should be said there too, where you, you have that flexibility that, you know, certain circumstances could warrant.
They would have to come and approach.
Extensions and so on. Okay.
So what I would recommend, um, that your number one should start on the word any, any individual residing, cause it, no, it only has to do with number one.
Exactly.
Right. Right.
That's why it was confusing, it was just really dis, not structured in a clear way at all.
Any other comments? Okay, great, so, um, I guess then we'll just put that on the agenda for, eh, two meetings from now.
Probably July.
Probably July, January.
January, okay.
Okay.
Alright, eh, on to technology.
One second, I'll break this down in my computer. So, I know that we've had a chance to discuss where we are with technology and with a plan in terms of phase one and phase two and, and what has been covered and I know that I gave you some documents, Mr. Onuweany, that you might wanna bring to it.
So, eh, we had been asked at a previous meeting to come back and discuss the, eh, expenditures which we, eh, have made on technology-related items. Um, some are, well, I guess these are, I should say, security-related items. So it, for the record, um, we have a detailed report and this is a good example of, for, eh, for example, we know exactly the cost, eh, the vendor and, and how many door installations were done on that day for security access features on those doors. We don't want to sort of disclose that, but we, we'll tell you sort of the dollar amounts, for example. So, eh, between May thirtieth of two thousand thirteen and September twenty-fifth of two thousand fourteen, eh, we expended funds provided through the Capital Budget Committee, approximately seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. And then again, ranges in things like, um, locks and lobby guards and access control systems, eh, other installations and other, other features. Similarly, um, from public school funds, both grants that were given to us, eh, Norfolk County Security Grant and a Section one ninety-two state security grant, eh, and then also school budgeted funds, eh, from fiscal year thirteen and fifteen, we expended sixty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. So in total, we're, we're talking about approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars that was expended.
So just a comment, to, one of the reasons the question came up was, was had we expended the monies we were allocated by the Capital Budget Committee? And the answer is yes, they have all been spent.
And as we look ahead to the phase two, eh, as we're talking about, eh, expanding the security features of the school, we will similarly be lobbying capital, grants, budgeted line items, eh, to fund those things. That's all we have, yeah, good.
Okay. So you have, now we talked about a public, eh, you know, police officer, school officer, which is only district in this, eh, in the South Shore, the designated school officer.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a, okay, first of all, where's Mr. Fennell?
Eh, he, he was, met with us in the executive session, eh, earlier this evening.
Okay, cause he was here on the October fifteenth, he was supposed to be here, okay, and then a year ago, we had all these questions about technology and Mrs. Cataldo did his presentation, cause he had babysitting issues, or whatever it was. And I pretty much attended almost every, Major Life's miserable, almost every school committee meeting and never seen him here except for the one night that he didn't open his mouth here. So this whole technology thing, we, I wanted, we wanted a report on the overall technology of schools while he was here to answer questions. Is Oscar everybody, is every projector, is, is the dear hill, we wanted all of this. That, eh, so and I had asked you a year ago, October, could we keep technology on the, on the agenda, every other meeting, every meeting, just so that we could check in? Cause things seem to get away from everybody up here.
Yeah, I think, um.
Cause when Mrs. Cataldo did his presentation for him, we all sat here, no one could ask her questions, cause she didn't really know the depth of it, everything, oh, Mr. Good, Mr. Fennell, Mr. Fennell, Mr. Fennell. Well, the illusion. Well, the elusive Mr. Benal, we've never seen again.
So your question is, uh, will we keep this on the agenda?
Question is, let's get Mr. Benal in here, let's find out what's going on.
So, I think, um, we should put on the agenda, uh.
I don't know how you're putting technology on the agenda tonight and didn't have it here. The man's only been to, like, a handful of meetings.
Yeah, well. Yeah. So I think tonight's agenda, uh, is, you know, primarily to talk about what we asked, what was asked last meeting to disclose the, um, sort of the security-related expenditures.
No, this is the actual, from.
And we, and t- for technology, I think we also have some, do we have any other, uh, information to report from the technology committee or what?
No, since we're, he went through with you folks, you know, some very hefty details as to how the schools are being manned now, what's happening with the fiber, what we're capable of handling, what if we were to do a BYOD or a one-to-one, what the capacity is for the number of devices, uh, the kinds of switches and things like that. So he's gone through that whole detail tonight with you folks, uh, to let you know that we're in a pretty good place, uh, happily, uh, in terms of moving forward, that's the next phase. In terms of the resource officer, just so I can report on that as well, I know that, um, Acting Chief Quigley has talked about putting that into his budget. So I know it's going someplace, but we don't wanna be replicating. So if he's putting in his budget, we would not be putting in in ours.
Okay.
So I do want you to know that as well. So, we know that we're in a in a very healthy place thirty months later, that we can move forward on the technology initiative that we're talking about for students, and that was critical.
And I believe, um, that Rob had prepared, or is preparing, a full-blown, um, summary of where we are in the technology, maybe that will address your issues.
Yes.
We've got to get in there, that's true.
And he will be, uh, giving that to us, uh, by the end of the year.
Yes.
Uh, so I think what we can do is put it on the agenda for the first meeting in January to kind of go over that.
Why aren't next Sep- next Wednesday?
Uh, next Wednesday is gonna be, uh, not enough time to have that assessment completed.
Well, uh, October first or October, it was October fifteenth meeting, he came and hit with the technology, and obviously he was blown out of the water because of the security issues. So you tabled technology, a week later, you tabled it again. This was never about the security matter. You can go, anyone can go to advisory, all basc- he bascetory is very willing to hand out, so is the, everyone's willing to share their information.
Well, actually, if we were, look at the minutes from last meeting, that that's exactly what we, we were charged with.
But if you go back to October fifteenth.
We were asked to get this and we've provided, so I think now we're gonna move to the next agenda item. And in January, we will certainly come back with a detailed, uh, summary of the status of all the technology pieces. I know also the technology committee, they're doing a ton of work, Mary, uh, and, um, uh, working with, uh, you know, Katie Dugan and other, uh, and Superintendent Gataldo as well.
And Superintendent Gataldo as well. So, Mr. Host, just a, an update on that, the technology committee will be meeting next Tuesday.
What's your expert on our committee on technology?
Uh, there's two consultants that are working from, uh, there, we have a former superintendent, I'm not sure if Joanne's present.
She was a technology director.
Um, so we have two consultants that we were, um, charged to hire to lead the technology committee. Uh, we've done three site visits. Um, there are teachers, there are numerous people on the committee.
Parents.
And we'll be, um, meeting next Tuesday, um, to kind of get our, um, all of our perceptions about the site visits and and our recommendations together. And then I would anticipate that the committee and, um, the two consultants would be presenting in January on that as well, for recommendations.
Yeah, so, I'm getting, this is why things fall through the cracks up here. October fifteenth, you had him sitting here, you're security technology, you tabled technology. A week, two weeks later, we had a meeting, so many weren't here, oh, oh, we're just too busy with technology on. These questions about security, this isn't bad, this isn't falling to technology. I mean, yeah, it does, and it's like, people wanna know where our schools stand, we want to know that, like to have Mr. Benal sit down, do an overall, and it's been a year, I can see the guy.
Yeah. So again, I think, um, he will be providing us with a summary report at the end of the year, and we'll put it on the very first meeting in January, uh, which I don't have the calendar handy, but is it?
January third.
January third? Okay, so, um, uh, we will, we will have that, I think, ready, ready then.
Seven, seventh.
He probably has the minutes and all the report that he sent for October fifteenth, I just don't know why he couldn't be here next week.
Yeah, okay.
We have this whole thing. The school hasn't given a, given a meeting here or overview.
So. I think we're gonna, I appreciate what you're saying, and I've heard it, so we're gonna now move to finance if we can, um, and we'll have that ready for January third for you, uh, and for the community in general, because it's a, it's important.
January seventh.
January second.
Seventh.
Seven. January seventh. Okay. Strategic.
Oh, okay. Uh, there's only, there's only a one idea for tonight, so the, the school committee to approve warrant fifteen oh nine S.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant fifteen oh nine S.
Second. Roll call, Bill.
I, Helen Lee. I, Jeanine Stino.
I, Paul Schubert.
Sorry, yes.
I, Mary Goldrick.
I, Pauline Vanning. The warrant fifteen zero nine S is approved. Is there anything else you wanna go over, Dave?
No, I think, I'm, yeah, I mean, I know originally we had the, um, the contract for the bus lease, but we're still working on that, so that's why we took it off, out of the agenda, and we'll bring it back when it's ready.
Okay. So parents did ask me about the bus delivery?
Yeah.
Was it anticipated and now delayed?
Yesterday, so we were putting, you mean yesterday's drop off?
No. We're expecting, the latest.
New bus.
A new bus.
The latest, we're expecting four of the, four of the seven by the end of next week, as we were told, yeah.
Is that consistent with what we, it's always been, or has it been delayed?
We're a little delayed, a couple of weeks, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Four of seven, end of next week, but they won't be in service until after the break, 'cause it takes them.
No, right, yeah. We have to get them registered and insured, um, two inspections and so forth, so.
Okay.
Uh, the radios have to be reinstalled from the old buses to the new buses, so it takes probably a couple of weeks.
After, after the break though, will the, will they all be?
We hope to, yes, yeah, yeah.
At least that's good.
Yeah.
I'll be excited. Okay. Thank you. Communications?
Yep.
Nothing new?
Well, a couple of things happening, another things happening in the district this week, just for the community to know, we have Friday night, Guys and Dolls begins their performances Friday night and Saturday night at seven, and Sunday at two. I know competing with that Friday night is the Deer Hill Circus, which is always very entertaining for the students. Uh, and I know Saturday that the football team will be down at Gillette for the first game at nine o'clock, 'cause a number of those players have to rush back to the school for the play at night. So we'll be doing double duty on Saturday, so there's an awful lot of events that families in Cohasset can partake of this particular meeting.
Excited.
State championship.
State championship, very exciting. Excellent. Um, administratively, we have, uh, Selectman Kennedy has, uh, has confirmed that December eighth,
Yes. Very good.
we have the, um, a joint session, uh, with Selectman, so we'll, uh.
Yes. Scared her there.
I'm sorry, I was gonna call her. Thank you. So we'll be there, and, uh, Mark?
Oh, I was just gonna add, this, uh, just happened last night, there's, um, CPAC hosted a speaker, um, on anxiety, who was really fantastic. Um, and, uh, I think there was close to fifty, around fifty people that showed up at the library for her talk, but I thought it was one of the best talks I've heard on that topic, um, which connected anxiety, executive, anxiety, oppositional behavior, um, tying it into executive functioning. Um, I thought it was really great for parents and teachers. She had a lot of strategies that were very useful. It was very interesting to note that one of the, um, biggest triggers for anxiety for students is writing. Um, so I could connect that with the Oz Good and the Importance of the Seventeen. But it was a great talk, so they have a great slate, so, you know, tell your friends.
Right.
Yeah, it was wonderful. She was really great.
Thanks. That's really wonderful.
And we've actually brought it back, I love to awkward, this is, uh, Demis Taim, said it'd be a very nice develop, positive, professional development for all the teachers.
Yeah.
Really useful.
I don't, it's not, even though, you know, you can be fooled in fairness, because CPAC will bring a lot of folks in to to present who are really designated for students who might need services, but they also bring in some phenomenal speakers and presentations that are for the general public, so they had one on the concussions, which there, there's not a select group of concussions out there.
Correct.
And then they brought in Jessica Minahan last night, who was an expert in working with students, uh, and wrote a couple of books called The Behavior Code, and so she came and presented, and I've known her for years, and she's just getting better with every year, so, but we can see the general ed application, which was so critical last night. I I think Mary said it best, it would've been great, she came home with all of us from the hospital, yeah, I showed her home, because it really reverbered up, so, uh, you know, we're going.
I don't, I don't know one parent who wouldn't have benefited from something that she said in the two hours, it was really, really outstanding.
Right.
Yeah, and from a teaching, like, having been a teacher a long time ago, like, I mean, I I just thought it was, would've been incredibly helpful as a teacher, and I was glad to see some of the teachers there, um, that was great.
Yep.
Right. Well, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for attending and for all your comments. We, um, we, we do have cause to go to executive session for the purpose of discussing, uh, the teachers' negotiations, if we could have a motion.
Will we exit an irregular session, we have the executive session to discuss strategy, strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation that will give a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigation of all the bodies, our committee, and you declare so.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I, Helen Lee.
I, Jeanine Stino.
I, Paul Schubert.
I, Mary Goldrick.
I, Pauline Vanning. Thank you.